Followed by our council meeting, we will begin with invocation from Brian.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come before an awesome and mighty God. Father, we praise you this evening that you've not left us empty handed, but Father, you gave us a pathway to life. Now, Father, I pray for this city council, I pray for our mayor, all the interest of our city, Father, that all be conducted to the best of not personal interest, but city interest, most of all, your interest, Father. We pray that you oversee this meeting this evening, in Christ's holy name, amen.
First item on the agenda is discussion from David Andrews with Center for Municipal Solutions recommending approval of specialty permit for AT&amp;T. Remove one tower mounted amplifier, six antennas, three remote radio units, and six speed lines. They are proposing to install three antennas, six remote radio units that are mounted behind the antennas, one surge protector, and three speed lines. AT&amp;T is completing this project to provide 5G service in the surrounding area to install, locate, an existing telecommunications tower located at twenty-one fifty-five Settlement Road, Solocaga, Alabama, to provide wireless services essentially within the corporate limits and police jurisdiction of the city of Solocaga.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council Mayor, David Andrews with CMS. This resolution is for an application received by AT&amp;T. This is a modification application. There's an existing two hundred and forty-eight foot tower at this location. AT&amp;T is currently providing service from a height of two hundred and seventeen feet. They're requesting to remove the old equipment that was listed and install the new equipment. And this is being done for a 5G technology upgrade which provides 5G service to the south Solocaga area. CMS has reviewed this application, recommends approval by the council.
Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
Good job, AT&amp;T.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Next item on the work session agenda is discussion by Jeremy Jackson of Green for Life regarding consumer price index increase and services to become effective on the April first, twenty twenty-four contract anniversary date. Jeremy?
You want me up here?
Sure, please.
Gotcha. All right, so the two things that we're trying to do, obviously, the first is to do an extension on the contract. It's that time. Second is we're trying to give the contract a three percent increase. The one that's actually in the contract, the year over year. And that would actually apply to each and every line. It would apply to the apartments contract, it would apply to the first and second cards. I guess first and additional cards. That would bring it to, I was trying to do some math on the way. I believe it would bring it to the fifteen thirty for the first hand. And...
Eight forty-nine for any additions.
There you go.
Four yard, four yard dump, two taps weekly, a hundred eighty-nine dollars eleven cents.
So I haven't done the math on the apartments. I was actually waiting on the sales girl to give me that. Because there's, I have a problem on the inside of mine that I've got to fix before I can actually start quoting them. Because my numbers are a touch weird in my system because they're, the way they price it out. Because some of them are dumped once and twice, so the price is weird. I have to get her to give me the stuff off of the, the inside that I don't have access to before I can actually say it out loud. But yes, that's pretty much it.
The current agreement already applies to the CPI, you're just asking us to...
Correct.
Validate authority of the agreement?
Yes, sir.
But here's the deal, guys, and I told you, Jeremy, you come and you, you wanted to increase, and we increased ninety-six cents.
That's right.
And you told us that that would, that would be substantial. And then you, now you're coming back and saying the landfill went up again.
The landfill hasn't.
Okay.
This is our...
So this is just because GFL, it's time for GFL to go up?
That's right.
Hmm, okay.
This is our CPI.
All right, here's the thing, guys, our citizens cannot keep afford to go up, up, up. And I know it's just ninety-six cents. I don't agree with going up, I think we need to keep it the same, and that's all I'm gonna say about it. And then, Jeremy, and I know it's not your fault, you don't have, I know you don't have much say-so with this, but our people are struggling enough as it is, they, we just went up on taxes. We can't continue to keep going up on things that our people depend on. It's not right for them. Now, I mean, I'm not taking it out on you, I'm just telling you how I feel and how my people.
So we're still almost twelve dollars cheaper?
And that may be, and we need to stay there.
This is how we keep it in that line.
That, that's, I think these numbers, these numbers need to be maybe readjusted and maybe a little bit more, maybe it shouldn't be fifteen thirty, maybe it should be fourteen. I don't know what the magic number is, but far as us increasing, I don't agree with that.
This is a contractual basis, so it's already been agreed, we just have to revalidate.
No, sir.
Send the contract.
I have a question for Jeremy.
Yes, ma'am.
It's my understanding that in October, we increased the residence ninety-six cents, but we did not touch the commercial, correct?
I actually was on the phone doing that on the way here. And we didn't increase the second carts on the residential side. We increased the first cart on the residential side and the apartments. They did those simultaneously.
I'm curious about your agreement with maybe some of the other cities, and I know about how y'all can lower the residential price through having the commercial...
To some degree, and to some degree you can. I guess some of that is more the volume. It's, some of the other cities have franchise deals where all of the commercial work is a part of the residential contract. It's just the city has one provided. L City is an example of that. I think Allen, Mayor City is another.
So they have an ordinance, okay, that makes...
That's correct, and as all of, it's been a minute since I looked, but I want to say their, L Cities actually has their own webpage with all their stuff on it. If it's something you want to look at.
If, if I'm not mistaken, this right here says that every twenty-one, we may receive an annual adjustment, Mr. Henry, of may...
That's actually based on the CPI.
Right, which is what we're talking about tonight, right?
So as long as it's up, we can go up. It's like it's down, then we have to adjust that way.
Hmm, okay.
You can petition us to go the other way.
But that's where I wish you'd go, is the other way and not up.
The problem is the inflation we're all taking.
Just like my residents are taking at the grocery store, the drugstore, and the gas station.
And trust me, we go to the same ones.
I understand.
We have to buy the same trucks, the same oil changes, the same tires. We want to provide a service that's working, you have.
Yes, sir.
But you have to come out.
It's good to see you, Jeremy. Likewise, likewise.
Any additional questions, comments, or concerns?
I got bored of your answers. I'll talk after.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Jeremy.
Yes, ma'am.
Item number three on the agenda is discussion by Brian Talton with a commercial development authority to discuss a one-year extension on the rental incentive package.
Yes, you guys, we'll recall, we can't, I believe it was in August, we met with Shree Pack Sheer LLC about establishment of an eighty-room hotel here in town. Obviously, they have it broken ground, but I can assure you, their intentions aren't to do so, but not in the location, because the national franchise that they have reached an agreement with, with is requiring them to be on Highway Two Eight. If they want to get that franchise. All I can say about it this time is it is a franchise you want in our city. So what we're requesting is a one-year extension on this incentive package, so that he can present it to his underwriters, and they'll continue moving forward. Now, there's some things in the works to make that happen, but I honestly cannot sit here and tell you that we're gonna be able to pull that off in a year. Because there's some things that gotta be put, put together before that can happen. But if we could start with allowing him a one-year extension, I assure you, he's extremely interested in doing something here. He calls me at least once a week. So I mean...
So Brian, I think I caught the tail end of that conversation, but I was reading you, please forgive paraphrase of why you're saying we need to have a one-year extension.
Because he, he needs to keep his underwriting.
Uh-huh.
And if his, this incentive package expires...
Okay.
Before he's able to get started, then he may lose them.
We, Alex, this would be a brown cash matter, I mean, this is...
But thinking back on our other incentives and lean-tippy all once we've done, you know, y'all can help to remember, but it's been a no war, no file, if we extend it, I mean, nothing's acted upon, and we're not going to lose anything.
It really is.
Yeah.
Nothing's gonna change with, with exception, he's actually gonna be coming out of pocket. I'm, I'm good with money, I'm good with it.
I got, we could run it by my cash.
I, I tried to, I reached out to Brian, of course, he's out until Wednesday, so I'm not betting on that conversation.
But I don't see it being a problem.
There's no, there's no reason not to do it. We want it, and it doesn't cost us anything, and revenue's not generated, so...
Right, yeah.
Okay, I can pass that word on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
But we, we will need to work, get Brian to work up a new incentive package, refine that extension.
Tell him shoot low, shoot low.
It'd be the same, it'd be the same package.
You could just probably write an extension of...
That's what I wrote. Yeah.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Item number four on the work session agenda, discussion by Chief Kelly Johnson, Police Department, to declare two Glock Model Seventeen firearms as surplus property to be spent to retiring officers as a token of the city of Solocaga's appreciation for their faithful service.
I'm present.
Okay, I didn't see you over there.
Is that Scott's guy?
It's Scott's and mine.
Who's, who's going to discuss it?
Uh, it's, the city has a, an ordinance that allows officers to, to get their gunny badge at the time of their retirement. Just like the firemen get their helmets, we get, we get gun badge. This year's, the badge thing's not going because, when we swapped over badges, we bought our own. So that the city didn't incur the price.
Right.
So he just, he kept his badge, but we're asking that for the guns to be surplus so we can get them on retirement day.
You sure you want to do that?
What? Uh, yeah.
I understand, I don't blame you, I've retired too.
I think that's a fair request. Anybody got any questions, comments, or concerns?
Come in.
All right. Okay, um, next item on the agenda, item number five, is discussion to move the animal control officer from the police department to animal shelter. This will include the budget, vehicle, and equipment. Can I start with Kelly?
Well, the mayor and Stephanie and I, and Alex, we met last week and discussed this. We've been discussing it over, over the last few months, and we hired for the animal control officer last time, it didn't work out. We thought that it would be a good idea for us to, to maybe try moving the animal shelter in, or the animal control officer into the animal shelter. Wanted to give the animal shelter an extra employee to help do things while they're not out wrangling cats and dogs. Give them more help in the shelter. Part of the animal control officer's responsibility is utilization, it is the way it's written in their job description. And the only way they can do that is at the animal shelter. Miss Stephanie has, has agreed to accept it. We want to send all the equipment that we have over with them, meaning the truck, traps. We'll supply the radio for them to be dispatched, they'll still be dispatched the same way. They'll just be supervised and hired by Miss Stephanie rather than through the police department.
Do they have any police powers?
There are no police powers, it's a civilian position. It, it's been in the police department forever, but this way we thought we could get more help with the shelter. Normally, they could call the shelter first, and then they have to call dispatch, because they think that the animal control is in the shelter anyway.
Yeah.
So we'd like to, to get your approval and go ahead and transfer everything over so that we can post for the job and go ahead and start trying to hire somebody.
Is there a way to do this and they still have police powers, or no?
They never have had police powers.
Okay.
Nobody, no animal control officer there ever.
I'm just asking because I was thinking about the nuisance abatement.
No, no, the ordinance that we're heading for, or the nuisance abatement, will still be up there. And as soon as we can, we're gonna, we'll put an officer into that position. This is, this has always been a civilian position.
As soon as you get somebody out of the academy, about two or three months, that's when y'all, you and Ryan, you're gonna find somebody, right? We gotta have somebody out in the academy, put on the road, and then run it up.
Have somebody on the road so that we can pull somebody off.
I got you. Thank you, Kevin.
Did we update that job description to...
The job description hasn't updated to, and it changed it from the police department to the report to, to now Miss Stephanie at the animal shelter.
Okay.
So when we approve that as part of the...
Yeah, it's on there to be approved by you guys.
It's on the agenda.
Yes, it is.
And when did you want to make this effective, sir?
We would love to make it effective immediately so that we can go ahead and post the position and start the hiring process.
I don't see a problem with that. Do you have a service board need to approve?
Yeah.
They'll have to prove.
If we can get it done now, we'll get it to the service board.
We can also approve pending civil service board.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number six, discussion by Stephanie Engel, Animal Shelter Manager, to have the Solocaga Animal Shelter deemed a recipient of PetSmart Charity's Adoption Partner Program.
Good evening, everybody. I've been interfacing with the PetSmart AME Director, her name is Lynn Gray. And this gives us an opportunity to expand our reach into new markets. It gives us better financial incentives. I would be able to apply for different grants based on statistical data I can supply. And those are based on different criteria. So I think it's a win-win, we, the city does not have to match anything. It will, I do have to file monthly reports with them. But I can tell you just from my interaction thus far, it's been a very positive relationship. I now have people coming to the shelter from Birmingham to adopt animals. I've had people travel from Hungwood and give us checks up to five hundred dollars. So it's been really interesting, you know, just to see the changes just from that little bit of interaction. And I do think, you know, the benefit of this, it's a little more work for us, but I do think the benefit would be wonderful for the shelter, for the animals, and for everybody who's involved. I mean, I really do. I think it's something we need to look into, and I hope, you know, it'll approve, and the mayor will sign off tonight.
I'm, I'm all on board with it, if you like, it ain't gonna cost us anything, I'm good.
Not cost you anything.
The city is turning now, you can contract, so there's no issues with it.
Perfect.
So go for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Numbers, item number seven, discussion needed to waive sign ordinance regulations for Florida. I'm not in favor of this because I, I don't think that we should waive the rules. Okay, let's take this out of, for now, when are, we're gonna take this off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number eight, discussion on Solocaga zoning board of adjustments and appeals appointment.
Yes, ma'am, we had two members reapply for the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, that's Fred Crum and Jason Cleary. Being that those were the only two that applied, and both their terms are expiring, we would request that council just reapply them.
I think that's a fair request.
Assuming you're willing, sir?
Yes.
Um, yes, sir, I talked with Jeff Turner, and he's spoken with both parties.
They're, they're good with it.
Item number nine, discussion that is necessary by Lynn Livingston, City Attorney, to declare property at five six two West Fourth Street a surplus in the proposed contract between Talladega Clay Randall Childcare Corp. and City of Solocaga relative to the real estate located at five six two West Fourth Street.
Okay, I, I was sent a copy of that contract by Alex earlier, and the amount that they're offering to buy the property from. And by the way, Mr. Heigl, I talked to Mitch Miller today, and they're not, I say go ahead and sell it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And it's, it's appraised for the same amount as what they're wanting to buy it from, but I sent emails out to all of y'all. The contract requires us to pay certain closing costs, which we don't know how much they are now. And I don't, I think we need to get it, the contract, I can talk to the realtor, however y'all want to handle it, to get it to where we don't pay closing costs, and we actually get a check for that amount, one hundred and fifteen thousand.
I like it.
Because that's what it's worth.
Needs to be a net amount.
Yeah, we shouldn't be paying any closing costs for anything like that.
We're not getting fair market value.
That's right, that's right.
So do I have any, will y'all give me instruction on what I do now?
I say proceed.
Okay, go get the check.
Yes. Everybody in agreement, proceed?
As, as you outlined, it needs to be in that number.
We'll have it on the next agenda to vote on.
Okay. Item number ten, discussion to hold a public hearing on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four regarding property located at eight zero five, eight zero seven, eight zero nine, and eight eleven North Main Avenue for the purpose of determining whether the building, structure, property, or condition is unsafe at that point in time to the extent that it creates a public nuisance.
I've made copies of the pictures that Mr. Livingston asked me to take today, so they're current, and they're in the manila holders. You come in?
And Alex, also, very few, I think, with the resolutions from twenty twenty-two, that's the end of these properties for the council, the Clay and them is nuisance.
That's correct.
And my concern is, is that we need a hearing because it's been a year. And we know it hadn't cleaned it up, I'm sure he hadn't, but I just think he needs due process and needs to be able to come to a hearing and show y'all that it's not still a nuisance. Or one of them's not still a nuisance, but there's several of them, they're all on by a penalty. And I will send out certified mail notice to him of whatever meaning that y'all said, so that we can be sure he receives it.
Is anybody living in these properties of yours?
Alex, one hundred, I know for a fact, since it's in my district, one hundred East Eighth, there's someone living in it. The rest of them are vacant, guys.
Is there any additional questions, comments, or concerns?
Yeah, have, we, we won't send this out for bid until we've done everything else correct.
That's right.
Public hearing, then it goes through the channels like we've done before.
We have sent a bid out.
Okay.
We coordinated with the services department.
Uh-huh.
They reviewed the proposed contract. We did send it out, and we asked that bid to be back for a hearing on one March.
For these, I wasn't aware, for these properties?
Well, it's just for whatever property we may have.
Oh, I got you.
Specific to these properties.
For these, but wouldn't we finish the list that we started first?
Yes.
Yeah, so these wouldn't, um...
They'd be on the tally?
Yeah.
I got you.
We have to finish that other list that had that seventy-something on it? I forgot how many.
Mike, how many?
It wasn't that many, it wasn't.
Yeah, it was like seventy.
That was on the first list.
This is on the list that was already started, this has got to be finished before we can team down with this.
So this will make the next list of...
If we get bids back on the project, and Lynn sets us okay to proceed, that will be the first project to be done.
Okay, and they started this...
Because it's on the years of the resolution.
Several years ago, with the cleanup, right? I know the street department went out with...
It started with forced draft labor, city labor. And that's when we had the flooding issue, we had some equipment issues, and basically it just went without, and it was decided that it's gonna have to be contracted out.
That's when our equipment tore up and all that good stuff, what?
There, there was a multitude of problems.
Right. I remember that.
And once again, the only reason for this hearing that we're gonna have is to be sure that's one less thing that somebody can come back on and say, oh, we didn't do it correctly, that we're going over.
Right.
And then we don't have to send out motion paper, it's just to the union.
Thank you, Mr. List.
You're welcome.
Mike, do you have any additional comments? Okay. Item number eleven, discussion to hold a public hearing on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four regarding properties located in at one hundred East Eighth Street and one oh eight East Eighth Street for the purpose of determining whether the building, structure, property, or condition is unsafe at the point in time to the extent that if it creates a public nuisance. Same...
Same deal.
Same deal.
When, those were the various properties we talked about on Friday.
Okay.
We got with Lynn, we found the resolutions and forwarded those to him. And then we coordinated with you to get those added.
Gotcha.
And all the hearings, we would like all the hearings to be done the next council meeting, twenty-second February.
That's a very fair request. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns from the council?
Question, if we take steps at some point to self-fund removal of these properties, do we have the right to lean so that we can recover the cost of the properties that were sold?
When is researching the liens right now?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna have that, I think. I didn't get to that point.
We're not there yet.
Yeah.
I got you.
We'll have a hearing before that.
I got, I got one more question about this. So remember we talked about the fire department possibly doing this as training, and then the asbestos thing came up? So, so any, anything else ever come from that? Or...
I think the business has to come off. You have to take that business off before you do anything, I think. Is that right, Mike?
What will have to happen is we'll have to have a contractor that places a bid.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah.
Where we'll be able to issue a PO, then we'll have to get somebody to abate the asbestos off of the building, and then immediately followed by tearing them down, because once you take the shingles off the building, that's gonna be exposed, it's just gonna deteriorate that much quicker.
Isn't that, is it worth it, is that even worth it?
What?
Going through the process for the, um, the...
It's the only way to get them down.
Yeah.
So we still have to do it anyway?
Yeah, we, we can't knowingly, we can't knowingly tear them down and put them in a dumpster with asbestos.
So we have to do it anyway?
We have to, there's no way around it, it's, it's...
But that's what I was asking, but since we have to do it anyway, and once they say they don't have it, can those go on the list where the fire department do those?
That'll be something they have to answer, there's issues with that too, because they can't burn shingles and things, and we would still probably have to go in and pay somebody to tear off the roof.
Yeah.
So it might be less expensive just to tear the thing down.
Yeah.
And you could take a house and track it over bribery.
Captain Sand, I believe.
Then you mentioned the control burn.
Um, it, it is come with inherent problems, and you, most of the time when we have questions about abating structures from members of the community, we advise them to, to deal with a nuisance abatement, had to tear it down, have, have somebody tear it down themselves. The fire department is very minimally interested, if at all, of doing training and acquiring structures because it is, there's so many hoops that we have to jump through, it's not worth our time. Thank you.
There we go.
I, I, I love you.
Um, any other additional questions, comments, or concerns? Thank you, Sam. Okay, item number twelve, discussion to dismantle the bank from the old Food World Building and donate it to Stevie Wyatt to replace an antique auto showroom as a memory and conversation piece.
Hi, Stevie Wyatt, thank y'all for allowing me to come before y'all. I'm Solocaga native, I spent my entire career in the banking industry, you know, retired as the president of Southern States Bank up here. I, I also collect antique cars. I built me a forty-five hundred dollar square, forty-five hundred square foot building as a shopping showroom for my antique cars, and I've got it decorated as a museum. One of the things I would like to put in there is the old bank facade inside the Food Max Building on Main Avenue. I've got a picture here to show y'all.
Yeah, I'd like to see it.
From thirty years ago. You might recognize that guy.
I was two thirty years ago.
Anyway, I had more hair, and it was a lot darker then two. Anyway, I, when I look back at my years in banking, that was the happiest time I had in banking. I was in, the first National Bank opened that up, I rented it as a load officer over there, about five years. We shut it down, and then we closed it up, and there was nothing, anything ever done with it. The Bruno Corporation just covered up the facade and kept using the grocery store, they shut it down. I wanna take that... I want to take that out, put it against the wall in my showroom as a, as a memorable, uh, uh, about time there, which is the best time I ever had in banking and also, it, it, the only best one in banking in this area.
You came before us in twenty twenty one also requesting this, didn't you?
I, I didn't, I had someone representing me, I, I don't care. Yeah, I've been, I've been working on this for, with the mayor for about three or four years now.
So is it your plan that you would send the contractor in to dismantle it?
That's correct.
And the discussions we had that stalled us last time around was the discussion when the liability?
Yes.
I talked with, with Mike Whitstone there, and I have talked, one contractor's done a lot of work for the city is Bruce Brooks.
Yeah.
And he has, I think, all the, all the proper credentials and interest to do that. And so I mentioned it to him and I will get him to, uh, to take it out and then, and then transport it over to my place over in the woods.
Mr. Lynn, and we're good we're doing that, right? That, that's the gist. Go get it, Mr. Stu.
That's what I want to do.
Well, we need to work in the law ability too.
Lynn just said we was good.
We're going to talk about the line, I'll talk to Stevie about it.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, you're not planning to open a bank, right?
I have an old bank in Shiggy Grove.
And, and if you're in removal, you find any money they forgot was there, you'll give that to the city?
Oh, I, certainly, I certainly do.
Stevie, is there any truth that they closed, you weren't selling enough produce?
That's really, I tell y'all one quick story that'll get out of the way. When I go to these bankers' conventions, they, you know, bankers are pretty braggadocious and they've been talking about how I got the biggest bank on the corner of Third Street and Fifth Avenue in Birmingham and all this and that. They look at me and say, Stevie, where's your bank? I say it's on the right side of the bananas.
That's pretty good.
Good to see you, Mr. Stu.
Thank you.
Can I get my picture back quick?
Mayor's got it.
It is?
Your only copy.
Thank you. Am I free to go now?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thank y'all for your time.
How you said it.
So Laura will vote on this.
Thank you for the words, it was good.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, item number thirteen, discussion to conduct a traffic signal warrant study for James Fane Boulevard in Old Birmingham Highway three. Do you like to discuss this?
I just, I brought it up a couple times. Yeah, we, we've brought it up at least two sec, two other council meetings about getting this done, getting a warrant study done, a tra, I'm sorry, a traffic study done, so that we can apply for grant money to put whatever type signal that comes up. But we have to have the study done before we can apply for the grants.
I think we already, um...
I thought we were denied, or you said that?
Well, last year, the grant money, I went to the bridge project down here.
Yes.
So, uh, but we can't, we can't make application for them unless we have the traffic study done.
Yeah.
There's been several accidents there recently.
We have one...
We're going to do a traffic study in Norton first, too?
Love to finish.
I did, I've, I've had enough of that already, man.
This is your first morning?
That is the cost of the traffic study.
Um, I don't have a current, this came up yesterday, and Michael Rice has gotten this one before, did you talk to?
I did speak with Michael Rice, um, he is calling the state to make sure the current, what we have, is still good to go. But if it's not, he expects it not to be in excess of eight grand.
Okay.
Which is just a few hundred dollars more than the original quote.
So we're on track to do it, because I could, I, I thought we were already...
We talked about it, we never voted on it, it's on tonight's agenda to be voted on, to not exceed eight thousand dollars.
I think it's a very fair request.
And the money would come from the general fund.
What, what are we going, can we do one on Norton, Chief? Sir, can we do one on Norton? You, you tell me no, I asked it last time, you told me no.
Do it in June.
I might have better luck.
Any additional questions, comments, or concerns on item number thirteen?
We're going to get a four way.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly, thank you.
Chief, and, and our twenty twenty four, twenty twenty four...
Tap grant.
Tap grant, the four way that we all agreed on that, uh, we're going to compromise with on Norton, is that included in that tap grant, do you know?
I don't have any clue about that.
Can you check on that, uh, Ms. Alex?
Yes, sir, I can.
Is that profitable to a man?
Yeah.
That means going to...
It was going to be a straight.
Right. Okay.
I know that's in the draw, but I don't have to say it.
Okay, so it is, is it?
I don't have to say it.
You don't have it, okay. Well, we all, I know we all agreed on it, this next different... I guess, well, whenever you see it, you let us know. Okay, thanks, Ray.
All right, any additional questions, comments, or concerns? All right, item number fourteen, discussion on fire department budget amendment request of the amount of three hundred and eighty-six dollars. Sam Opelbeek is here in lieu of fire chief, he was at the fire chief conference.
That's correct. Thing, all this is, is we're requesting to move three hundred and eighty-six dollars from training supplies down to data processing equipment to allot for a bracket change in one of our data systems that we use for responses, and that's all it is.
Price increase from original...
Well, it wasn't a price increase, basically when we hit a bracket of users, they, they pop this up in brackets, which is kind of unexpected. So that's all it is. But that doesn't cost us anything, it's just moving three hundred and eighty-six dollars.
This is a very easy request.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments, or concerns from the council? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, item number fifteen, discussion by Alexandra Lambert, City Clerk Treasurer, to provide fiscal year twenty twenty four funding status update by department, earmarked sales tax status by department, bank account reconciliation status.
The first thing we're going to talk about is the bank accounts. We decreased the bank accounts from thirty-seven to twenty-five. Of that number, we have balanced thirteen total. We still have twelve more to go, and we have to go all the way back to twenty twenty one on some of these accounts.
Where's, where's the document that you were giving us once a month? I know I haven't seen it, do you have that?
I put it under a tablet now.
Will you print this next, A?
It's okay, I'll, I'll get some. Um, me and Nicole Brown are the two in the office balancing the accounts, we still have twelve more to go. We've done the majority of the easier ones, we still have the largest accounts to go, and they will take some time.
Is there a goal to minimize the amount of bank accounts more?
There is, yes, ma'am. Yeah, we're going to wait until the auditors come and see what they have to say about some of the other accounts that we need to talk to them about. And all the banks right now are local, so we closed all banks that were outside of Silicon Valley, and all our banks are within Silicon Valley right now. Um, the earmarked money? We've recalculated the earmarked money, and we did send that on tablets. If you need, does anyone want an update by department? Okay, um, so for the earmarked money, the street department is negative twenty-six thousand plus, and that's because of the pay, pay plan. We're taking the money from the pay plan. Um, I expect that should, we should have that money by April, they should be at a zero balance, so. Um, infrastructure is going to be seventy-three thousand. Capital seventy-three thousand, recreation is ninety-seven thousand. The fire department, because of the pay plan, they're negative two hundred thirty-four thousand. The police department, again, because of the pay plan, negative twenty-one thousand, I expect it'll be done by April, and you'll have a negative balance, or a zero balance, sorry. Reserve seventy-three thousand, paving a hundred and forty-six thousand, debt, we have a hundred ninety-five thousand. Total earmarked money is three hundred dollars shy of a million. For the earmarked. Are there any questions on the earmarked money?
We're on the right track, Sam, bud.
We also have a status of each department and their spending rate till now. The majority of the departments are spending at a higher rate, with the exception of building services department, they're at eighty percent. E N L, they've spent, I'm sorry, they have available sixty-eight percent. Accounting and finance, seventy-five percent. Court still has sixty-four percent available. Police department, fifty-nine percent. Fire department, seventy percent. Animal shelter, seventy percent. The street department, sixty-nine percent. The shop is sixty-six percent. Uh, building services was eighty, and building and custodian is sixty-four percent. At this time, I would like to ask the council to let the accounting and finance office know what you want to do to prepare for the budget meeting in April. Our recommendation is we took one million, four hundred ninety-seven thousand and some change away from the departments and the entities. We have one point five million dollars.
So we're going to be able to, to level funds to everybody?
We're asking to level fund to everybody on March first, instead of April first.
And it's technically on level fund, these are what everybody requested.
Yes, what everybody requested, yes.
Oh, so, but some people requested level funding, though.
Yes, so those people will get level funding.
Yeah.
But whatever the police department asked for, we're asking to give them everything we can put.
For the departments.
For the departments.
Okay.
And the entities, if that's what the council agrees to.
Yeah, because that's, that's what I'm asking, so since you're saying there's enough money to give everybody what they're asking for, I don't want to be, I don't want to, I want to get people excited and then they're not getting the above and beyond. So what's, so that's what I'm asking, so are they just getting the budgeted amount that they asked for plus the extras? Or are they just getting the budgeted amount based on what they got last year?
No, ma'am, they're getting what they asked for for fiscal year twenty-four.
So the extras as well?
The extras as well.
So the department and entities?
And entities, if that's what the council decides.
Like school and G A. Do we not want to meet with these entities, give it, go and give it to the departments and let's meet with the entities, or y'all want to just go on and give it to?
I, 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 I don't know, because, so we're not having a meeting in April is what you're saying?
I'm, I'm asking what you guys would like, because we have the money now, and I was going to ask you guys to vote on February twenty-second to release the money to...
I, I think there's going to be a meeting, because, I mean, that was a few months ago, and we really, after we said no, I don't, I don't remember, you know what I'm saying, what we're about to...
I can get on board with giving it to the departments and let's meet on the entities. But if you want to meet with everybody, then I can get on board with that, too.
No, because...
I think what Tiffany's asking for, and I may be wrong, but she wants to have a clear understanding of what we're actually asking it for, right?
And then, the, the reason I'm asking, this is why I'm asking, this is what I thought was going to happen, because we're doing a six-month budget, we know everybody got funded through, only through April. So if I'm an entity or whoever else, since I already knew you were going to cut everybody's budget, I probably didn't ask for something I needed. You see what I'm saying? So I probably just said, well, I should just be happy if I get what I need, you know, get what I got last time, and there's something I didn't ask for.
Right, we originally had asked everybody to provide whatever they wanted, after we had everybody's list, their wish list, that's when we realized we did not have enough money to fund, then they got cut. So they submitted what they wanted and then they got cut.
So now you've got the money to give the departments and everybody give what they want, now you've got the money to give the rest of it, correct?
Yes. And we can get a list of what those expenses are.
Yeah, I, I think there needs to be another meeting, because, I mean, the budget, we have, well, no...
You just want it laying out and saying, this is where our money is going to be.
Right, yeah, because there's still maybe something on there that we don't feel should be funded, I mean, there is a lot of things that should be.
That's right.
Still, you can always spend the money, like, that's because I gave somebody a blank check.
I agree, so do we want to meet, do we want to meet with departments and entities, or just entities?
I believe we need to meet.
What do you want to do?
I believe we need to meet with both, just to ensure that we're all on the same page and that we know where the taxpayers' money is coming from.
Because then, too, don't forget, with parking rent and locker and the museums, there was still some money that was talked about for, um, pay increases.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure that's taken care of, it's loyal too, you know? Because right now, I know you can look in the bank account and say, hey, we got the money, let's just give everybody what they asked for, we kind of did it.
We might, we may find out their needs have changed.
Um, as well, too, I know the school system, they had an additional request.
And like Lee said, the need may not change.
They may have had additional requests.
Yeah, because now they may need this, and they need something else, so...
Yeah, we'll just make, let's plan to meet, do it, meet with everybody and let them show us line by line what that money's going towards, and we know we have it, so.
Everybody's on the same page.
If you could provide to us so we could look at it, what it is we'd be funding, if we just did it as restoring what we took back.
Glad you asked.
Time prepared.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you, thank you.
And we'll, we'll have this as a, perfect, perfect, perfect.
Alex, is there any...
That's all I have.
Anything else, okay, anybody have any additional questions, comments, or concerns?
Do we need to talk about setting up a meeting to meet with everybody?
Yes, we do.
Or we suggest, just suggest some, it's good to see, or to suggest a time for meetings?
She'll need to reach out to departments.
I got, I got a question.
I'm working Monday through Sunday now, so...
I got a question, because we originally said in April, before we go to pulling the trigger, is everybody at a good state of their budget to April to where we can still do it in April, or is somebody negative and this is something that needs to be, um, done now?
There is only one entity that's negative through no fault of their own, we had to replace the air conditioner, which you guys voted on. So the money comes from us, but it's against them.
Yeah, but that's, but that's the only reason I asked, because I mean, since we've already said we're going to do this in April, we're in a good spot, money's coming in, I think we should just still do it in April.
Everybody's getting it.
If that makes sense.
Everybody's getting it.
Yeah, makes sense, it makes sense. I was hoping y'all had more to meet on today. We're not over, ain't it, Brian?
Long meeting in ten, twelve.
I, can I say something?
No, not if it's recorded.
Can the Penta Gallery speak?
Sure, yes, sir, can, will you?
Well, the, the, the last budget meeting we had, there was two or three different times that were announced, and there were a lot of them that didn't, that didn't figure out the exact time we need to be here until the day before. And so we just need to, if y'all can agree on a date and time and let everybody get that on their calendar, because that's an important...
Sure.
Meeting that everybody needs to have representation.
Everybody was on time, though, everybody.
Everybody stayed for the rest of the day.
Rachel, were you alone or not on time?
No, I may, I was there. No, I was there.
Alex, if you don't mind, the next couple days.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we have already discussed item number sixteen, seventeen. Um, wait, let's see, no, we have not discussed item number seventeen. Action that is necessary to approve resolution number eleven, twenty twenty four for the police department to declare nineteen computer monitors, one class on the television, thirteen computer keyboards, two six-foot wide lines, and one two thousand eight Taurus S E L, then number, do I have to read off the number?
Absolutely.
A surplus property and authorized disposal on govdeals.com, online auction, or other appropriate means. Item number eighteen, action that is necessary to approve resolution number twelve, twenty twenty four for accounting and finance to declare one Martin Hill paper folding machine, serial number four three H five two four eight, one Canon printer, color image class M F six five six B D W. I'm not going to go through and read the serial numbers for each of these. Um, and two toner for Canon printer, color image classes, surplus property and authorized disposal on govdeals.com, online auction, or other appropriate means. Item number nineteen, action that is necessary to approve resolution thirteen, twelve, we've already discussed that, um... We've discussed number twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, item number twenty-five, twenty-six, um, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And then, uh, item number thirty, action that is necessary to amend the FY twenty-four budget to move funding from police department salary and fringe in the amount of forty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy cents to animal shelter salary and fringe. Item number thirty-one, action that is necessary to amend FY twenty-four budget to move funding from police department animal control operating expense budget in the amount of five hundred dollars annually, the balance is currently a hundred and twenty dollars to the animal shelter. They had spent three hundred and eighty dollars on cages this budget cycle, like this budget.
That's correct.
So that's why there's only a hundred and twenty dollars left in that. So that's why there's only a hundred and twenty dollars left in that. Okay, let's see, we've already discussed item number thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and item number thirty-five, Alex, would you like to let the council know why it's such a hefty amount?
Large amount, one point three million dollars was spent to pay the bond.
Cool level on?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's why your cap table's so high.
Okay. That is one million, five hundred sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. Item number thirty-six, action that is necessary to approve January payroll in the amount of four hundred sixty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-one cents. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns?
I got a question more.
Yes.
The department that we had to replace the air conditioner, why, why was it that considered capital?
I'm not sure.
Because, and I'm just asking, because that's typically not their fault, so why?
Well, we didn't take it from them, we paid for it, and then we just reallocated our money.
Where, I have another question too. Are you, Tiffany, do you have anything else about, um, the museum, or is there, what are we?
We're gonna have to be at end of the day.
Are we temporary patching it until, what, where's, what's the status with that, because they had a terrible leak through the last rain, and I mean, it was going into their electrical box.
What's your guess, Mike?
The electricity had to be cut off.
I thought the art, they think they'll recommend a roofer is what they do, to do the cheapest temporary fix, and what we, whatever we do, seems to be torn off anyway. And they have not contacted me yet, they called, inspired a date to see if the roofer had contacted us, and I told them no, and he said he was gonna call me back, and so.
I get you.
We're, we're going to have to pay for the patch, but we're gonna spend the minimum as possible, because we're gonna repair it back on.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Is there a timeline on that complete roof replacement? Is that in the works?
The bid's the twentieth, and then about thirty days after that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Ellen.
I gotta check on the OR to see where that money came from.
Yeah, because I can be, because, you know, for things like that, you would think they would come out of capital instead of, so, because if so, then maybe that money needs to be replaced by some money in capital, so it's not affecting their budget.
Right, we should be still.
Okay, will you let me know?
I will.
Okay.
I will.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns? Okay. We will um conclude our work session, and we will begin our council meeting at six o'clock.